All right, it is 6:45. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm going to bang my gavel. Can I have roll call please?
Ms. Brown? Ms. Crespo? Ms. Dalasandro?
Here.
Mr. Freias?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Sim? And President Langley?
Here.
We have a call for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to move into closed session please? Roll call please.
Ms. Dalasandro?
Yes.
Mr. Freias?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
And President Langley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We'll be back at 7:30.
For the committee report, I can mention the, should I mention the, um, policy we discussed?
We've discussed it all the committees.
Okay. Then I'm actually, then I'm not, I'm just gonna say about the.
You're presenting what you have for those minutes in those agenda things, you can't do it, and then Eric will just take them in for the minutes.
Okay.
Right, you can just kind of base them on the committee reports.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, this won't be really have much to discuss, so.
It's actually K one and two are the same one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I thought about putting in there.
All right, it is, oh, would you mind reading the mission statement? When we get there, okay. Uh, it is seven thirty, we will reconvene this meeting, can I have roll call please?
Ms. Brown. Ms. Creswell. Ms. Delasandro.
Here.
Mr. Freus.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. The Sim.
Here.
And President Langley.
Here.
Mr. Alvin Quorum.
Thank you, let's all rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thanks, uh, Mr. Cohen, would you read the mission statement please?
The River Edge School District is a partnership of students, parents, staff, and community members. We are dedicated to providing a supporting, supportive environment in which all students can reach their maximum academic potential while developing as responsible citizens who respect individuality. Our goals will be achieved because curriculum and instruction are aligned with the New Jersey student learning standards. All decisions reflect the academic, social, emotional, and physical needs of pre-K to sixth grade students. Cooperation and ongoing communication exist between the school district and the community. School administrators and the Board of Education work together to assess and adjust procedures in response to new mandates and the changing needs of the community.
Thank you, open public meetings notice.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting, its date, time, and place have been delivered to the post office municipal building and the record and posted on the district's website at least forty-eight hours prior to the time of this meeting.
Thank you, uh, we will open it up for public comments on agenda items only. Seeing as there aren't any, we'll move on to reports, superintendent report.
Good evening everybody, in a minute we're gonna roll the tape, yeah, in a minute. All right, good evening everybody, um, welcome back to school, uh, we've been doing, uh, September now for twenty-five days, uh, we had a very successful, um, uh, professional development kickoff. I think that the schedule was, um, both meaningful and rigorous for the staff, um, in the first day, and then we had the, uh, early dismissal days to, um, round out the balance of the, uh, professional development. So it was, um, well received by the staff, and, um, I'm glad we got to have that time, um, to develop ourselves professionally. We, as part of back to school, we have some, uh, new employees, so two of the new employees came tonight, uh, we invited everybody, but, um, we have the video, we said, but we have the video, so, um, Kyle Gavin is here, he's our, uh, new STEAM teacher for both schools, in fact. And also the STEAM coach for the balance of the faculty, Kyle, do you have any, wanna say hi?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to show up, um, you know, kind of put like a face to names and everything, and, you know, I'm excited to be here, I started in February, and, uh, up until now I've had like a really great experience, like all the staff's very welcoming, and, um, you know, I did like the STEAM, uh, family STEAM night, and I don't know if I saw some of you there, but it was just so many people, so, uh, yeah, so far it's been great, and I just look forward to continuing.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, happy to be here.
Kyle's STEAM nights were, uh, well, very well received, and, um, very fascinating, uh, to watch the dads try to complete the tasks, um, with their, with their students, and then like elbow them around, like, I'm gonna get the, anyway, it was lots of fun. Katie Virtuci is al- is also here, she is the school, uh, the, the school media, library media specialist for the district. Katie, hello, anything?
Well, I was just very grateful for the opportunity to be the school librarian, I was a school librarian in New York prior to this, and worked at the library, but I've really enjoyed getting to talk to students this past month, and all of that, and students are very welcoming as well.
Thank you, welcome.
Both, uh, thank you Katie, uh, both staff members represent two, uh, programs that are, uh, these staff members are shared staff members for both Cherry Hill and Roosevelt, um, they're both programs, I would like to, uh, expand in the future, if possible. I think our students would benefit by having a second, uh, library media specialist and a second STEAM teacher, so that, uh, they still might have to commute for coverage, um, however, a more robust offering for all the students is something that I, um, would hope to see in the future. When that future is, I have no idea, but, uh, because, um, you have to expand budgeta- budgetarily, so it's, it's difficult to do, but they're both programs that, um, merit a close look. For the other, uh, members of the staff, we have the. For the other, uh, members of the staff, we have the, uh, welcome video, traditionally, those folks would come here and, uh, say something to the board, but, um, this year, we availed folks the ability to, um, record their names, what they do, and tell us something about themselves that we might not otherwise know, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Chloe, and I am the new health and phys ed teacher at Roosevelt School, and my fun fact is that I went to London and Ireland this summer.
Hi, my name is Amanda Quinn, I teach three through six special ed in the Building Connections Program, and I love the beach.
Hi, my name is Rachel Hoffbauer, I will be teaching fourth grade at Roosevelt Elementary School, and my fun fact is that I played lacrosse in college.
Hi, my name is Nicholas De Biscual, I am the new physical education teacher for both Roosevelt and Cherry Hill, and a fun fact about me, I have been to the Bahamas before, very fun experience.
Hi, I'm Melissa Savalos, I'm the pupil assistance counselor at Roosevelt School, um, a fun fact about me is I started yoga about three years ago, and it's something I'm really, really liking so far.
Hi, everyone, my name is Alyssa Conlin, I am going to be, uh, the resource room teacher at Roosevelt, I've been trying to leave just for three months, um, I'm excited to be here, and my fun fact is I attended Roosevelt School.
Hello, everybody, my name is Michael Anasini, I'll be a sixth grade teacher at Roosevelt this school year, and my fun fact would be that I experienced my first major earthquake this year.
Okay, hi, I'm Lindsay Dromado, I'm a K through three special ed teacher in the Newburg Center, and my fun fact is my favorite season's ball.
I'm Jane Lombardi, I'm gonna be a kindergarten teacher at Cherry Hill, and I just got back from Hawaii this summer.
My name's Kyle Gavin, I am the STEAM coach at both Roosevelt School and Cherry Hill School, and in my free time, I enjoy coaching baseball and hiking.
I'm Katie Bertuzzi, I'm the new school librarian at Roosevelt and Cherry Hill Elementary School, a fun fact about me is that I have two cats.
Hi, I'm Kristin Hamilton, I'll be teaching first grade at Cherry Hill this year, and I love the beach.
Hi, I'm Emma Hines, and I'm a resource room teacher at Roosevelt School, and my fun fact is that the Outer Banks is my favorite place to be.
Hi, everyone, my name is Madison Kelly, and I'm a third grade teacher at Roosevelt, and a fun fact about me is I have been skydiving before.
I'm Danielle Maudie, I will be, uh, fifth grade English Language Arts and Social Studies teacher at Cherry Hill, and I have been skydiving and bungee jumping, so I've just went up to you, Ms. Kelly.
My name is Renee Ross, I'm the occupational therapist here in River Edge Schools, I'm very happy to be here, I'm excited to start the school year.
Hi, my name is Christy Comeford, and I am the fourth and sixth grade resource room teacher at Roosevelt School, and a fun fact about me is that I have a pet rabbit.
Hi, my name is Joel Schwartz, I'm an interventionist at Cherry Hill, and fun fact about me is I love basketball.
Hi, my name is Janine Zinkler, and I'm the NBC school nurse.
Hi, my name is Lynn Bosch, and I am the district Spanish teacher, and our fun fact is that Janine and I both were on the Cherry Hill School PTO Board for six years, and now we're working together.
Again.
Hello, I'm Eric Thomas Savage, I'm the new school business administrator, uh, fun fact about me is I never broken a bone or had a cavity.
My name is Joanne Camporelli, I'm the new executive assistant to Dr. Bernice, and one fun fact about me is that I'm a twin.
Thank you so much, and we discovered that there's more twins working in the district as well. Thanks, uh, to everyone who, uh, put that together, uh, and who started it, nice job, sir.
No cavities, huh?
No, no cavities.
Wow.
We have, yeah, we have cookies in a playground right there, we're gonna change both of those things.
Great view, though, from the office, right?
Not a bad view from that, yeah, absolutely, uh, so thanks to all those folks. On the agenda, we're accepting, I guess, the third PTO donation for what I'll call the calendar year, um, uh, the PTO, I, I commented, uh, on the first days, or the first PTO meeting of the year, uh, I attended with, um, Chief Walker, we commute back and forth to the schools to do both. I thanked the PTOs for their generosity, and also commended them for their, uh, robust fundraising efforts, uh, I don't think I've ever seen a PTO donate over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one year. So, um, be- between both, both playgrounds and the fifty thousand dollar tech splash, um, it's, it's very close to three fifty, so that's a pretty impressive, uh, donation to the district. So I don't think, um, these things would have done, uh, been done expediently without the help of the PTO, so it's quite remarkable, and so, and great thanks to the PTO, both PTOs, for these donations. On the agenda, there is a, a policy item that we'll, uh, discuss during the discussion items, um, and the individual student, um, reports were mailed home this week, uh, for, uh, NJSLA. So parents have the, um, language arts, mathematics, uh, student reports, and if they're, if they had a fifth grader last year, they also now have a science report. And at the next meeting, uh, Brooke and Christine will give us the district report, we have sixty days to report, um, from when that's delivered, so, uh, the next week, uh, next month's, um, board meeting as well within that timeline, so, uh, we're, that will be, uh, next month's meeting, and, uh, that concludes my report.
Very much, uh, any questions? Or numbers, no? All right, uh, Board Secretary report?
Yeah, um, so thank you, so I have a couple of items to just highlight, uh, two of the items is the agenda items which Dr. Bernice, uh, provided, so I'd just like to kind of, kind of recognize some of the donations, um, Doc, and Dr. Bernice provided, the Roosevelt PTO donation, which again, you know, definitely, um, on behalf of the district and, you know, the business office, you know, we thank, thank the Roosevelt PTO for their generous donation, um, and that playground was vetted by the district's architect, and, you know, hopefully, we're moving along, um, after tonight, you know, and getting that completed, hopefully, prior to the winter. The other donation was a two hundred dollar donation, cash donation to the Cherry Hill, uh, that was through a cyber grants from Krishnan Kodishwaran. So again, thank you for the, you know, the two large, you know, donations, that goes towards improving the district, our students, um, as well as staff. As far as non-agenda items relating to the health benefit rates, which we have, we received an update since our finance meeting, uh, so the state has approved the recommended rate increases proposed by Aon, which ranges from twenty-nine point five percent to thirty-six point two percent. Uh, the current budget was constructed on a fifty percent increase across all plans, which was recommended, uh, by the Health Benefit Professional. The district is in the process of finalizing what that impact, that actual impact will look like, net of employee contributions for this year, and we hope to have it in the upcoming week to the Finance Committee, and that concludes my report.
Any questions?
What was that percentage, um, when you began for the?
So the, so the, it ranges from twenty-nine point five percent to thirty-six point two percent, and that depends on if it's, uh, in the New Jersey EHP, or Direct Ten, or Garden State Plan, those are the three.
And we had budgeted fifteen, one five.
And we've budgeted fifteen across all plans, uh, based on that premium, yeah. So I mean, um, well, the first aspect is to kind of look at the, you know, what that, that, um, impact is, and then kind of compare it to, you know, the overall, the other lines that we have some breakage in. One of the areas, just, you know, I did an analysis with the PCR, which is our position control roster, compare that to the current staff, with, you know, which we, we have a lot of new hires, um, versus what we budgeted with salaries to see if there's breakages there, as well as any other lines that we can maybe move money. And then the next area we could possibly do is moving, you know, unreserved fund balance, um, items like that, you know, stuff that we potentially didn't budget that we could, you know, appropriate in this year's budget, whether that's additional tuition revenue, you know, so we'll look at all, all different areas.
We should have, you said, we'll have that together, my, the finance meeting will go over those.
Correct, yeah, we'll go over it, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, um, and then the other, the other area where we're looking at is, uh, we're currently retrieving data from the state to look at our claims to loss ratio. Once that, that data comes back through our, our insurance broker, Brandon Brown, they'll identify if, if, if there's potential to shop, you know, for a private carrier, um, outside the state plan. So we'll also bring that to the Finance Committee to see if, you know, that's a potential.
Okay.
It's, uh, from speaking to him, uh, the goal was to kind of, if that's possible, to get it effective January first, um, but that might be a, a very tough deadline.
It's a little tight.
A little tight, yes, yeah, so if, if that is potential, we could talk about, you know, strategically, if we could, you know, if we could do an, another open enrollment this school year, or we, you know, we kind of talk about maybe a July first.
July.
So it might not help this year, but maybe for the future, but.
Okay, all right, good to know, thank you. President's report, I just have a couple of things, we had talked before, we were trying to get together a date for a board retreat, um, but the more we were talking about it, it's looking like we really only have one thing that we would have to do, which is, uh, approve some district goals. Since we already have the, uh, strategic plan, that might not take that long, so I was considering not having a formal retreat, but bringing that up during our next closed session. We're doing a shorter retreat, but I wanted to kind of open it up for discussion, see what you guys thought about that, if there was anything else that we definitely wanted to do in a, like, in a retreat setting.
Would it be, would it be able to be a standing item that are our executive sessions to discuss over the?
Oh, it's a public matter, right. We could add it, we could add it onto a public, a regular public meeting, it was, if it's adopting board goals, right, I mean, uh, district goals.
To discuss district goals?
To formally say, these are our district goals, right, would that have to be, um, have to be on the agenda?
The goals need to be approved, I think what we could probably do is, um, spend a few minutes in committee, uh, in next month, discussing what the committees believe, could, you know, the goals could, should, might be, come up with a, a, a committee draft, if you will, and then, at the next meeting, perhaps allocate some time for discussion on, um, board goals.
Yeah. What do you think? Sounds okay, I, I just didn't think there was anything else to put on a, like, a retreat agenda, unless there are items I'm not thinking about.
I think it'd be beneficial to review the strategic plan, we, we have that opportunity to sit down and discuss that, if we get a time permitting with everyone's schedule.
Right, so if we did like, uh, like I was thinking anyway about a two hour, it's usually we would do like a four hour, like half a day, but maybe we could do a two hour sometime between now and the next meeting, and then also bring it up in committee, to talk, you know, if we felt like we needed to, all right. All right, let me, uh, get a couple of dates together, we, we used to look at Saturdays or weekends, but if it's a two hour session, would a weeknight be easier, because a lot of people are out, like, what do you think? Maybe some weeknights, okay, all right, let me get some dates.
Some dates out there, and then.
Yeah, let me throw out a bunch, because the next meeting is when, the twenty-ninth?
If you add some food, more people would be interested.
Yeah, we'll get some food.
Two hours should cover reviewing the strategic plan and then discussing goals.
The twenty-ninth, okay, yeah, all right, great.
Anything outstanding that we can move to committee to?
Yeah, we can do it that way, okay, that sounds good, all right, and the only other thing I'll just mention, um, is that we will have a board seat vacancy, um, as of January, so we will be posting for that, uh, and, you know, if anybody has questions or interest, please reach out to me, or any other board member, and we'll, you know, be reviewing applications, I guess, depending on what we decide we want to get from everybody, but we will have an open board seat, so if anybody out there is interested, I just wanted to mention that. All right, um, committee reports, we'll do finance and facilities first, I had it open. They can stay if they want to.
I, I invited them to stay, but I also hope that we wouldn't be offended.
They don't, no, I'm not, not offended, not offended.
There's no snacks or whatever.
Yeah, there's no snacks, so.
If you're hoping for something to eat.
But this is fascinating to watch, so you're welcome to stay. Finance and facilities met on the ninth at seven, uh, Elithia Crespo, Miguel Freas, myself, Dr. Bernice, and, uh, Mr. Tom Savic were there, uh, discussed the PTO donation which we talked about, um, we also discussed, uh, this policy matter that we'll, we'll talk about later regarding tuition, um, discussed the personnel matter, and then we talked about, um, the health benefits, uh, which we already discussed, so that was a relatively short meeting. And then personnel and management?
Personnel and management met on September sixteen. Was it five thirty?
Five thirty.
Yeah, five thirty, uh, PM. Dr. Bernice. Eric. Joshua. And you are on the phone, right?
I was on, I was there.
Uh, it was a v- virtual, anyway, sorry, I didn't, uh.
I have the notes, you want me to?
Yeah, please, I didn't have.
So, uh, in attendance for, as, as Mr. Justin mentioned, um, we discussed the accounts payable and receivable position, um, a new buildings and ground supervisor, which I believe is on the agenda tonight, uh, the completion of the policies, uh, which was a tremendous achievement by, uh, everyone involved, uh, we discussed the employee tuition, which, uh, in terms of students, not employees attending the district, but, uh, children of employees, and that is also an agenda item tonight, um, and just some other, uh, vacancies regarding personnel.
Curriculum instruction met on September ninth at four thirty, Mr. Langley, Dr. Bernice, and myself were in attendance, uh, we discussed all the professional development sessions that had gone on that first week of school, uh, we discussed a policy, and the grade chair chat, which we, um, just looked over, thank you to Ms. Moran and Ms. Geller for putting that together, and, um, it had a document that had department quick links and important notes, um, it was really nicely presented.
All right, moving on to, I have a motion for, I am E three, please.
Ms. De La Sando?
Yes.
Mr. Freas?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. The Sim?
Yes.
And President Langley?
Yes.
Motion carries on E three.
I have a motion for G twelve. Did I say that? Sorry, I have a motion for F three, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. De La Sando?
Yes.
Mr. Freas?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. The Sim?
Yes.
And President Langley? Motion carries on F three.
I have a motion for G twelve.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. De La Sando?
Yes.
Mr. Freas?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. The Sim?
Yes.
And President Langley?
Yes.
Motion carries on G twelve.
I have a motion for items eight, eleven, through six.
Prove, uh, items H one through H six as stated.
Motion second.
Ms. De La Sando?
Yes.
Mr. Freas?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. The Sim?
Yes.
And President Langley?
Yes.
Motion carries on H eight.
I have one through six.
Oh, sorry, one through six, yep.
I have a motion for H seven, please.
I'd like to move H seven, as stated.
Second.
Um, discussion on the side?
Project, uh, re-
Project, I was asked for an explanation. The, a member district of Region 5 reached out to Lisa Bernardo, kind of in the 11th hour of opening school at the last week of August, and they had a, their transportation, I'll say coordinator, left, and they hadn't done any of their transportation yet at all. So Lisa saw this as an opportunity for Region 5 to demonstrate its metal in transportation and didn't want to turn down the opportunity. So Lisa and another employee in the Region 5 office accepted the challenge of arranging transportation for an entire school district overnight, essentially. It required two full weekends and a number of four-hour blocks after work for two weeks straight. So the, the money here is not for Lisa Bernardo, that's, she took this on as part of her administrative, you know, responsibilities of being the director of Region 5, but we didn't feel the need to compensate the other employee, which this is not part of our contract at all. So that's what this sum represents. In the future, we see this as an opportunity, perhaps, for other, now that they've been able to successfully demonstrate this, we believe that there is a chance that we can attract other districts to perhaps entrust Region 5 with their transportation so that they can perhaps save costs and ask Region 5 to go ahead and do their, arrange their transportation over the summer, but then also submit their DRTRS report to the, to the state annually as well. So there's an opportunity for Region 5 here to expand its offerings. If we do get more districts interested in this and then decide to employ Region 5 to do this work, we're going to have to add an employee. But the, the, the hope is that the revenue generated by offering this service, essentially a transportation, another transportation service under the Region 5 umbrella, would generate enough money where it, it would balance out any new staff that we would need to hire.
So am I supposed to not approve this? Am I supposed to abstain from this?
You can vote however you'd like, sir. If you don't like the idea, you can abstain or vote no.
Well, my wife is the best administrator in.
In the district. Then you should abstain from the idea.
I just, I didn't realize that until now.
And abstention in this case is completely appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts? Anyway.
Yeah, I made this chart here, so we, and abstention doesn't go towards, and abstention goes towards the quarm, it does not go towards the.
Oh, all right, great. That's good to know. That's good to know. All right, any other questions now? All right, roll call, please.
Can he, can he still motion it, or show?
Yeah.
Yes.
He can make a motion for it, for sure.
He just, I think it's in the, his best interest to abstain from this.
Yeah.
Ms. DeLisandro?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sim?
I, I don't think there's a problem, any conflict or anything. Just, just saying. Yes, but I just will, I just will say that.
And then President Langley?
Yes.
And then Mr. Freias, you had abstain, correct?
Abstain, yeah.
So motion carries on H7.
Right, thank you.
I don't think it's a problem either, but I'd rather.
Oh, you're on the side of the station.
I don't think so either. There is, there's no way that you or your family would directly benefit from this. If anything, it, it takes away part of the other district, yeah, I, there's no, there's no real conflict here, but I understand if you, if it's easier to abstain, it makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
But Mr. Sim is correct, there's no, this would not be an ethics issue.
All right, thank you. Any motion for I3, please?
So moved.
Who was it?
I3?
All right, 1 and 2.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. DeLisandro?
Yes.
Mr. Freias?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Sim?
Yes.
And then President Langley?
Yes.
Motion carries on I3.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for item J15, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just question. Just, this settlement, can you explain what happened?
In...
Is that a closed session?
One second. It could be, I mean, it relates to legal. I mean, it probably would be better closed.
I don't know, both of them.
We can take a recess.
Do you have questions, Mr. Simpson, about it?
Yeah.
Can I, can I have a motion to move into closed?
So moved.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll be back soon.
Who is the motion?
Who is the motion?